I'd like to call this meeting in order. Please join me. The Pledge of Allegiance.
We bid to the flag, the United States to the ground, and to the public's stance, the mission under God, the principle, the liberty of justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Will call, please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Donahue.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third Order 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Reports 2021-2022, year-to-date November 4, 2022. 3B, Correspondence Received November 10, 2022, from OECD Regarding Code Enforcement Report for City Council.
Are there any comments of any of the third-order items? If not received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one concerning DPW. Just a reminder that Department of Public Works was off on Monday, the 14th yesterday. So the trash and recycling will be one day off this coming week. So just wanted to remind citizens of that. Thank you.
I had one announcement I mentioned last week, but I just wanted to remind people that this Friday, November 18, starting at 5:00, will be the Holiday Light Show kickoff over at Naft Park. So you can drive through. And there are some other things that you can do that evening for the kickoff as well.
Anyone else? I have a quick one. So this year is our 10th Annual Cookies for Kids Cancer, the McAndrew family. For the past nine years, we've raised over $60,000. And this money raised is for less toxic treatment with kids with cancer. So this event will be Sunday, November 27, from 12 to 2 p.m. at the Career Technology Center at Lackawanna County, where we invite -- I'm sorry. It's that 3201 Rockwell Avenue. We invite everyone interested in volunteering, baking, or stopping by for some delicious treats. To do so, every dollar counts, and we need your help. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
Ms. Joan Hutter-Wanitz.
Joan Hutter-Wanitz, Scranton. Do you have any updated information on the status of the three union contracts, police, fire, and single tax office?
Well, what I do know is the police chief just mentioned he's going to arbitration.
Yeah.
I also heard on the street that the firefighters are as well. The other one I'm not aware of.
Okay, well, one of these days, they're going to come to fruition, and the other shoe on the budget's going to drop. Also, you know, in listening to Chief Carroll, I wonder, you know, what impact on these drawn-out negotiations and arbitration are having on the morale of the employees. It's something we often don't consider. We think in terms of the money it's going to cost the citizens. But if I were an employee and I were in a union, that would weigh on my mind. What about the status of the 2021 audit?
So Mr. Waldenberg sent an email, and we have yet to receive any answer. But Mr. Waldenberg and I had a discussion today, knowing that you would bring up this question. So, Mr. Waldenberg, what did we decide?
That I will reach out direct to, Kohansky &amp; Company tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I'm going to hit up Mr. Murray, our controller. I want him to start keeping tabs on how much we're paying the legal counsel for all these union negotiations. I wonder what that money's going to look like. Hopefully, that's in the budget somewhere. Speaking of the city, this morning, I did look again at the city website, and I see that there's some effort on the city archives, the financial reports, and some of the other webpages. What had happened? Did anybody find out why, you know, when you clicked on the archives, you couldn't get a lot of the data that was there a month ago?
I don't know what happened, to be honest with you. But of course, we can inquire.
Well, anybody's trying to look at the previous union contracts. You're going to have a hard time because they're not there anymore. You know, also, I'm hoping that when they restore these files, hopefully, they're going to restore them, that we will have the new DPW contract up there and not the previous one. And I was looking at the single tax office had their updated city funds distributed. And I'm wondering, do we have any update on the payroll preparation tax, how that's moving along?
Just as with their presentation, it was of recent. We didn't receive anything, any update to that effect.
Okay.
Mr. McAndrew, we received an update late this afternoon.
Okay, well.
Oh, good. So that should be the third order next week?
And I could also share it tomorrow.
Okay. Oh, just from my memory now, Thursday's the next caucus for the budget at 6 p.m.? Okay. Item 5C, the $41,000 transfer from the contingency fund to the Civil Service Commission account. It wasn't unclear when I looked at the backup exactly why did they have a negative $41,000 in the special cities fund? Didn't really say. Just said that we were in the hole.
So that was actually one of the questions I had tonight that I was going to have.
Okay. Maybe you could find out about that for next week. And item 5M, the Riley Association's Contract for Engineering Services. I looked at the updated, or I assume it's updated, fee schedule. Is there a cap on that contract? Or we just pay as we go?
I'm not sure. I think that we had a discussion about a cap. I'm --
Was there a cap on the Riley contract? Does anybody know?
I don't recall there was a cap. And I don't recall in the explanation of the C.C. administration is in the RFP or RFQ, they are permitted to bid out their fees, such as the one that they, the fee schedule that they attach to this legislation for jobs that were, that did not fall under the scope of the contract.
Okay, all right.
So to say if there was a cap or not, I do not know that.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Evening, Council. Tom Coymanuka. Looking at the budget, it had mentioned that the property values in the city have dropped over the past year. And at the same time, it seems that we're increasing taxes. It's quite interesting that as residents lose more money value, they get charged more money. I don't think that's how it's supposed to work. I think that when the boat is raised, then the fees raised are supposed to compensate for that. I just found it interesting that it was mentioned in there that the city's property values have decreased at the same time they're asking for 3% increase. Looking at that 3% increase, we haven't projected because, as we've heard, arbitration is looming because it seems that the negotiations aren't negotiations. They're just a waiting path till arbitration is actually called because that seems to be the outright plan at this point. Looking at the DPW rates, I think it would be prudent to take a look at the 3% that DPW used and gave that as a baseline to the fire and police department contracts. Even though it's not officially out there, a 3% raise across the board for this budget would be reasonable to put in there as a buffer. Considering it's already been given out to one department, I doubt that the other departments are going to take less. So having it with no increase because we don't know what the budget is kind of undercuts everything. We're looking at more jobs in this managers, directors. In 5D, I believe we're looking at a housing manager, and they talked about five spots just for rental properties. It's amazing how, when a city is struggling financially, and we are still struggling financially, that management starts getting top-heavy. That the less money we have to spend and the tighter our budget is, the more we find to spend on employees. Corporations have the opposite of do more with less, which causes a tremendous amount of problems. City government and government in general has do less with more, which is commensurate of the issues of throwing more people on to duplicate, to non-define, to pad jobs, to produce no more in the end. None of this that has been proposed for cost savings for the city in the past year has actually come to real fruition in numbers. For the authorization of the appointment L for the housing authority, it shouldn't be the mayor's job. At this point, city council has the option. It shouldn't be taken on her good faith, her word, what she decides. City council should take its duty, interview the people, all candidates, and city councils should decide. She abdicated that, the mayor, when she let the 30 days go by. City council should not depend on her vetting because it's not her position to vet anymore. It is city councils, and it should be before this body. Disaster recovery plans. What's the city's financial disaster plan since we're talking about that? We all know the cliff's coming. We see it there. But I see no cuts anywhere, just increases. It was talked about that the privacy and security of information is an excuse to keep the front door closed. Police had put up there that the public image is an issue. Well, part of the public image is when you need to secure the door against the public because the people in the building are not securing properly private and secure information. If they can't secure information in this building and do their jobs, they shouldn't be on that jobs. We have a constitutional right to access to public buildings. To do any less violates the oath all of them took. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Council. I want you to look at these pictures I took of three different properties in my immediate neighborhood, like two blocks away. There are three different houses here. As you can see, it clearly shows a misapplication from the Office of the Licensing Bureau under Mr. Olasky. He's waiving a fee. As far as I can find out, he has no job performance to do so. I think there's these fees that were supposed to be paying his salary, and he has no business whatsoever wavering them. I believe there should be a total investigation from day one why he's been doing this and when he started. If he stopped, I don't know because these are recent pictures from this past summer. You know, I think this has become a personal issue with Mr. Olasky and Mr. Sunday. I've filed complaints for years. Not a single thing I've ever complained about's been addressed. But here, all this nonsense been going on because of rubbish 50 or 60 feet from my house to the house next door. It doesn't make any sense to educated people that we've talked about it. I think Mr. Sunday's got a personal, just a vindictive agenda here to keep this going. First, it was, like I said last week, it was rubbish. Then it was a metal lawn chair on my porch that's been there 20 years. Then he went back to the rubbish next door like it's my business. The people living there didn't get a ticket. The people in the house didn't get a ticket. I got one. And I'm going to court, and I'm going to drag everybody into court because it says on my papers from them, I can subpoena people. All this over nothing because of some foolish nonsense from these two. They don't have nothing better to do in the city than bring an issue like this up. It's just senseless. Right where I keep complaining about trucks on city property, which is residential, the man that changed the motor, the motor weighs 4,000 pounds. It's sitting there. Oil cans and rubbish everywhere. I've mentioned it three or four times. It's never, he's never been down there to give venue a ticket. The man lives on, just almost across the street from where he parks his truck. This is all so senseless. Anyway, I want to see something investigated here. These waivers, they're taking money from our pockets. I don't know if it's friendship or what's going on. It's like if one of the policemen took care of a ticket or something. He has no legal authority to waive anything. If an individual wants to work on the house themselves and do some lesser work, they don't have to buy a permit. Otherwise, this very department told me, if you want to do business in the city, you have to do it with an approved contractor. I had somebody from, I don't know, they were a troop or something, wanting to do some, my roofing. And they, the construction people had to come from town, which didn't, I had nothing to do with it. But the man that gave a lower bid lived way out of town, and the city wouldn't let him come in here to work, he said. Well, thank you. I know I'm letting it all steam. But this is, this is something going on here that it's time to put it into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olasky.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about follow-through. You know, you people pass a lot of legislation, and then it goes away. And we don't know, I mean, what's happening? For instance, do you think when we walk by the corner of Wyoming and Linden, we see a park, a pocket park? Uh-uh. No, we see a eyesore. What's going on? Okay. I guess I like the same answer. The leachate. When I ask about the leachate and the content of the leachate, concentration of certain items, and you say, "Well, we asked for that, but we never got it." We depend on you to do this kind of stuff, and you never follow through. The acoustics. When I brought that up last week, it was just like, yeah, yeah. What is, what is going on with the acoustics in this room?
I don't know. I agree with you on the acoustics. We even promised this for three years, three and a half years that I'm here. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you please follow up on the three items that?
I haven't, I haven't finished, though.
Okay, well, taking care of three of them for you.
Stormwater. You know, it's been a long time since we've heard that. When is that going to be completed? And, you know, last week?
East Mountain, there is going to be?
I know the meeting tomorrow night.
Right.
I'm on with that. But Mr. King, last week, ask about the street signs. Why don't we get reports on the street signs? So we all know. I mean, are they being fixed or not? I know I went by one today that has absolutely green smudge. That was all that was to it. And things that are coming up that we've signed to, you know, Meadow Brook 2. That's another important project, especially related to stormwater. But before that can be done, we have to have some rights, some property rights. Have they been done? We should know that. I mean, is that whole project going to be overlooked because they didn't get the necessary rights? And then, you know, we have trucks. We have those trucks that clear the, are supposed to clear along the curbing. But where are they when you need them? We had a lot of leaves in the gutters and over the drains so that they could, the water couldn't go in the drains, which causes people problems. Where were they? A couple, last week, I think we had a big storm. Today, we were calling for a storm. Did you see one on East Mountain Road? I didn't. And I don't know where they hide them. So I would like you guys to start following up. When you authorize a project, that's when you should start keeping up with it and sharing that with the public. And I would like to know how long the police contract has been in arbitration? We've been hearing, as we said, negotiation. And is the fire contract the same?
I think they're about to go to arbitration.
Okay, well, the chief said two things.
Right. Maybe, for clarity's sake.
Well, no, yeah.
I'm not sure, but that's the direction. I know that the fire department, the latest I heard, it's soon. The actual date?
It's going into arbitration? Or it's being?
Going into.
Okay. Well, I guess that'll be it for tonight. But I do hope you start keeping us up to date on the projects you have authorized. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Fifth Order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
None at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Yes, just a couple of quick ones. I know Jonah mentioned during citizens' participation about the work session that's this Thursday. We hadn't announced it before, or earlier during the announcement portion of our meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. This Thursday at 6:00, we'll have another budget work session with department heads. So that will be with the mayor's office, with the business administrator, human resources, and the law department that evening. And I just wanted to bring up citizen complaint, an issue that, I'm not sure if they've received violations before, but it's been a previous problem that I've brought forward at 417-419 Harrison Avenue, where they habitually leave the trashcans out the entire week and quite filled. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if we could circle back with code enforcement on that issue, I'd appreciate it.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just have one. So I received an email from Mr. Dennis Engels. He's the principal or one of the directors over at Lincoln Jackson Academy. So his email that was sent to me, and, Mr. Waldenberg, I'm going to pass this on to you. But the Safety Committee at Electric City Academy would like to request the street in front of our building, 1739 Dixon Avenue, Scranton, PA 18509, be designated as a school zone with proper signage. Please let me know if this is a possibility, and thanks for your time. So I'm sure it shouldn't be a problem, but just let's put it in that direction, if you would, please. I'll forward the email, the exact email, to you later.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. So that's all I have. Thank you.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, ratifying and approving the submission of the fee agreement for a temporary construction access agreement and easement for repair work to be performed on the Lackawanna Avenue Bridge.
At this time, I will entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes. No, aye opposed. The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction and ordinance, amending file to Council Number 93, 2021, an ordinance as amended entitled, Appropriating Funds for the Expenses of the City Government for the Period Commencing on the First Day of January 2022 to and including December 31, 2022, by the Adoption of the General City Operating Budget 2022 as amended by transferring $41,079.32 from contingency account number as noted to civil service commission account number as noted to cover expenses.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into the proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, could we please reach out to Ramilda Crocamo as well as Mr. West to get a full update on the reasoning for this transfer?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Waldenberg.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, for introduction and ordinance, enacting the rental ordinance of 2022 by repealing and replacing the city's rental property code.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So I would, I'd like to make a motion to table item 5D.
Is there a second? I'll second.
When looking at this, item 5D does include additional housing inspectors, designated rental inspectors. There's some positions here that haven't been approved through the budget process yet. So I'd like to make this motion to table it until we get, you know, further clarification on that. If we could reach out to the administration and see why this is included in this before we have passed the 2023 budget.
I will, sir.
I agree. There's positions in here that we haven't passed.
I just have one comment. I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. McAndrew. Maybe I'll reach out to, I'll have Frank reach out. And there's just some questions I have. Looks like a pretty thorough ordinance, which is good. But under the tenant responsibilities, it said-- But under the tenant responsibilities, it says any damage over 500 is a violation of the chapter. I'm just wondering why if it's over 500, it's a violation instead of, it should be any damage should be a violation, I would think. I don't know if that's an error or not. And then with the search warrant, I think it should be administrative warrant. So that's just, it's not a big deal. I'd just reach out to them and see if we can make that switch.
On the question, I don't understand why we can't ask the questions or concerns that we have and have to table it and not just still be able to introduce it and to discuss the legislation this evening. I was going to speak to this legislation as well as 5E and 5F tonight, which I can, I can do later now, but I think it'll be important to add the new positions to this department and with the changes in this ordinance. So they're substantially changing it from what it had been, and this has not been working the way that the ordinance was currently written. So they've done a lot of work to, to make those changes there, and I'm in favor of moving forward with it. I do understand the concerns about the budget, and I'd be happy to find out what the answer is to that, too. I just don't think it's necessary to table.
See, I think there's some, some positions that are missing from this ordinance as well as positions added, and it's just, it seems the budget should be passed before this comes before us.
Anyone else? There's a motion to table. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McCann?
5E for introduction and ordinance, repealing certain permit, license, and fee requirements, and amending certain other permit, license, and fee requirements.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I said I just had a brief summary that I wanted to include about a few of these pieces of legislation and the changes that you're seeing. So there is the permits reform, which there are a lot of unnecessary permits that we still had on the books that we weren't, some of them that we weren't even collecting, or we had really low collection rates on. So that's going to help to update, update the permits and the ones that, that we find necessary and appropriate. One of the changes in there, too, is for the dog licenses, which are also collected by the county, so we're just going to leave it to the county to do that. And from what Mr. Brownie has told me, it sounds like they'll be coordinating with the people who have previously paid for licenses with the city so that they're aware of who would need to continue paying those, those licenses. And the contractor licensing reform as well, that's, that's going to be helpful in making it a little less difficult for contractors to become licensed with the city. It's something that I've heard over the years, even from my own, like, contractor that, that I've used on my property before, how there are a lot of contractors who haven't wanted to go through the process and to become licensed within the city and would rather work outside of the city because of some of the holes that they have to jump through. And so this is to make that process a bit less difficult for them and to encourage an increase in the amount of contractors that are working here in the city of Scranton. And the rental regulation reform, as I mentioned already, there will be a lot of changes taking place with that. We know rents are increasing. The city is becoming a place that's not as affordable for people to rent, and that's a narrative that I've heard a lot more even over the past year. And I'm home, but for a long time I was a renter, and I remember it being very affordable, so I feel like that's been a quick change in our city. And along with the rentals that are available, there, there are a lot of safety issues. There are things that we are not able to inspect as a city with the way that the legislation is currently written, because we have to, there has to be an issue where we're invited in or an emergency that we're already present there, for inspectors are to be able to address. They're not, they're not inspecting these properties when someone comes in to, to pay for their rental registration or to first register their rentals, and we don't really have a good idea of what rentals are out there because we have a really low compliance rate with the people who actually pay for the rentals. And in addition to that, there are people with multiple rentals on their property that aren't registered, that we're not aware of. And so a lot of these issues cause potential safety and health risks for our residents, and we want to take care of our residents. But to, in order to make these changes, we're going to need the staffing changes to do that, because with the current capacity, they're, they're not going to be able to address even, you know, the small portion of those issues without having the housing inspectors to do the work. And it's, it's going to take some, some time to initiate and, I think, to get everyone on board with, but I feel personally that it's, it's a really important move for us, and I always take an issue with the out-of-town landlords. And granted, we do have responsible homeowners, responsible landlords within the city, but then the ones that, that aren't responsible, those are the ones that we're often having these continuous cyclical problems with light and with, with property issues. So it all ties in together.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm sorry, did you have?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion also to table this, although I do agree with probably most of what's in here. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Page four of this document has a backup, in the backup documentation on page four, there's positions in here that have not been approved yet through the budget process. There's also these rental positions and the new inspector changes that I do think we need a little bit more info on, so I would like to make a motion to table this.
Well, did it?
I didn't get to ask on the question, so I was late to the ballgame on that one. But on the question, I would like to make a motion to table.
Unfortunately, I think we already voted. I'm moving it forward to six. However, I think the opportunity would arrive when it moves to sixth order next.
It can. So again, we have a budget. If we're going to be adding new positions into a department, I think the budget should be passed before legislation is approved stating that those new positions are included. So that's my two cents.
We can hit it again next week.
So I'd be a no on that.
All right. Thank you. We can hit that next week. Okay.
5F for introduction and ordinance, amending the contractor licensing requirements and related provisions.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to table 5F. Also contained in this, there's language about adding new positions and the repurposing of old positions which have not been approved through the budget process and council oversight.
5G for introduction and resolution.
Wait, excuse me, on the question, to table?
We didn't have any questions. There's a vote.
We have motioned on it. Anything else on the question?
Right, that's what, well, there's a second for a motion to table.
Right, and then we didn't have, see if there was any...
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McCann?
Motion to table fails.
Motion fails, 2-2. All right, next.
5G for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Lieber Electric Inc. to provide the electric component of the replacement of the HVAC unit at the public safety building.
I think if I could...
All right, go back and...
Point of order, 5F, we did not vote on the motion to table.
Read it again, Mr. Voldenberg.
Let's call for a motion on, to vote on 5F before we move to 5G. Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
This is 5F, so we're going to do all in favor?
I'm sorry, or all in favor. All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. 5F, 2-2 fails.
5G for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Lieber Electric Inc. to provide the electrical component of the replacement of the HVAC unit at the public safety building.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling, Inc. to provide the mechanical component of the replacement of the HVAC unit at the public safety building.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I for introduction and resolution, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, R 5037, currently owned by Sanderson Street Tavern, LLC, and located at 655 Sanderson Street, Troop, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18512, to Carmella's Deli, LLC, located at 106 North Main Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18504, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced to its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I'd like to make a motion to table item 5I.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second table, item 5I. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, November 29, 2022, at 5:45 PM. On the question? None heard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to amend the agreement with Northeast Inspection Consultants, LLC, for third-party inspection services.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5K for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into Outfall 072 Stormwater Line Transfer Agreement and Assignment of Easements and Bill of Sale with Pennsylvania American Water Company.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5L for introduction and resolution, authorizing appointment of Krista Murray, 1622 Roseland Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority, replacing Thomas Galella, Sr., whose term expired September 27, 2022. Ms. Murray's five-year term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on September 27, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that 5L be introduced into its proper committee.
I would like to make a motion to table 5L. I do think that there was a point made here tonight that I agree with. I also, it was in agreement with the, the reappointment based on the number of days that had passed since the term expired. So the term expired on September 27. It was 30 days past. Council can make an appointment here. I don't, I'm not sure how many applicants we got, but I would like to make, see if Mr. Voldenberg could reach out to get those applicants, and maybe council takes a look at reviewing these and appointing someone for disposition on our own.
Second, there's a motion on the table. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCann?
Yes. All those in favor of introduction, or I'm sorry, a motion to table?
We already did that. I'm sorry, I'm getting off track here.
Next, sorry.
5M for introduction and resolution, amending file resolution number 15, 2022, a resolution entitled, amending file to council number 8, 2022, an ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Riley Associates to provide consulting engineering services to change the legislation from an ordinance to a resolution.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5M be introduced into its proper committee.
Second. There's some...
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Solicitor, can you take a look at this and review it? I know a little bit of, some questions came up during public comment about it. If you could just review the document, please.
I did speak with Attorney Esquire on this previously. I will look into Ms. Swanett's requests, whether they're capped. I would think that they're not, but I will look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 32, 2022, an ordinance establishing permit parking in the 1500 block of Pine Street.
You've read reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, filed to council number 33, 2022, an ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January, 2023, to and including December 31, 2023, by the adoption of the General City Operating Budget for the year 2023.
You've read reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I'd like to make a motion to table both item 6A and 6B.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to table items 6A and 6B. These ordinances are for permit parking and the 2023 operating budget. Both pieces of legislation are scheduled for public hearings on November 22 at 5:30 and 5:45 PM. Excuse me. On the question? None heard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 153... Adoption, Resolution Number 153, 2022, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling, Inc., to provide heating unit replacements for the fire station project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 154, 2022, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Carrier Corporation to provide a chiller compressor unit replacement for Scranton City Hall.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed to council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance that has been tabled to allow for additional input and any changes.
8B, Resolution Number 143, 2022.
This piece of legislation is a liquor license transfer. It had been tabled to allow for a public hearing, which was held this evening. It'll be on the agenda next week for a final vote. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.